Good evening, welcome to the Hingham Board of Selectmen meeting. It's Wednesday evening, March 14th, 2018. I think we're fortunate that, you know, this board normally meets on Tuesday. We had a somewhat of a time-sensitive matter, scheduled the meeting for tonight. And with town meeting being closed yesterday, I guess maybe we were, you know, a little bit prescient on that, I don't know. Anyway, we have two items on our agenda tonight, they're both time-sensitive matters. The board will have a sort of regular full business meeting next week. But these are a couple of things that, two of them relate to the school department and one relates to a reserve fund transfer. So, the first item on the agenda is a review by this board, in our capacity as park commissioners, of a proposal by the Hingham Public Schools to use Bear Cove to access the Back River for the Hingham High School rowing program. So, we're joined at the table by our harbor master, Ken Corson, by our real estate council, Susan Murphy. We're joined in the audience by members of the program. We appreciate everybody coming in. Tom, maybe you could just start and give us a little bit of an overview of what brings us here and what we need to do this evening.
Sure, thank you. So, Hingham High School has approached the Selectmen's office and requested the use of Back River for the Hingham High School rowing team. This is a program that traditionally has run out of, off of Barnes Wharf in the Hingham Harbor. And for a number of reasons, whether it be weather-related or the wave heights and safety and et cetera, I think that the intent is to find a safer or more regularly usable location for the rowing team. And that seemed to be, the theory is that that could be Back River. So, we, in order to do that, there's a number of things that has to happen. The National Park Service had to sign off on it. And that was a, that was a conversation that Attorney Murphy and I had with them last Wednesday, Thursday. That was subsequently approved. This use was subsequently approved by them. So, that's, that box has been checked. Now, we just need to put some, put some meat on the bone regarding how the, how the program will be run out of that location. This is intended to be a pilot program, so we're going to be data gathering as well as permitting here. You know, we're going to be, we're trying to understand what their needs are and to provide for those needs. But at the same time, we recognize that we don't know what all those needs are going to be. And we will, we'll be taking notes along the way this spring, so that in future years, if this works out this spring and we end up permitting it more, in a more formal, long-term fashion, we'll have better, better information to make that a more solid program. So, to that end, I've asked Attorney Murphy and Harbor Master Corson to be here and answer any questions you guys might have. The school department is here, as well as folks from, from some of the rowing organizations. So...
You know, I might, might just start if I wanted to, if we could. I know we have the president of HHSRA here, Marco Boer. And Marco, if I might put you on the spot for a second, just come up to the microphone and talk a little bit, just, just for the benefit of the audience and for us, about, you know, why, why you would like to do this program?
Sure. So, good evening. First of all, thank you for your time. Hingham High School Rowing is a program that is run by volunteers. We compete under the high school logo, and it's very important to us to be able to get access to the water as early as we can. The spring is our competitive season. We have about, I think, 10 weeks in, in the entire spring season. Our first regatta is in four weeks. And so, the more time we have on the water with the kids, the better their senses of the momentum and the synchronization and things like that. We've been doing this out of Barnes Wharf for about 10 years, and it's a great location. Except, we live in New England, and, and the weather is very unpredictable. And so, there's a number of concerns. One is Hingham Maritime has very old docks. And while we have, you know, the wonderful opportunity to use those docks, at the same time, they're very concerned that if they put them in early and a storm like we've had recently hits, that's the end of the docks. And while there's plans for new docks, those are at least a couple of years out. So, make a long story short, they have pushed really hard to delay the launching of those docks. In fact, they're going to launch those docks about a week before our first regatta, which would mean we only have one week of water time before we compete against all these other schools, including the private schools, who've had lots of time practicing. Now, as you know, we've won several state championships over the last few years, just through grit, sheer grit. And so, we've been looking for years at alternatives through a long-term discussion with Logan, our program director, and Jack Shapen, who's one of our board members, who's also an environmental police officer. We decided that we wanted to try a pilot, to see if it's viable to row on that Back River, which is in a more sheltered location. We're very concerned about waves. You know, we won't row unless the water is calm enough to row. We've got incredible coaches this season, many of whom have experience in what we call wet launching, because there are no docks, which of course is an immediate concern. But it's a very common practice, particularly in the UK, which is a huge rowing country. So, we're very confident that from a location perspective, it's safer being on the Back River in the early season. We think it's a viable location in terms of having enough length to be able to row in that sheltered location. We've worked very hard to get access to dock space at Hewitt's Cove. And it's amazing how many entities in town, I think, have really stepped up and said, "Yeah, let's try it." You know, this is a pilot. We may, at the end of it, say, "Oh, it's really, you know, we don't have enough water time there because the tides aren't favorable." Or maybe it wasn't as convenient as we thought, or maybe the harbor master thinks it's not, you know, within distance enough of him being able to respond to things. You know, at the end of the day, it's 10 weeks. It's not that long. We're always with inside of land. We have seven coaches, all with save launches. So, from that perspective, I would really like to have a chance for our kids to be able to try that location. So, that was the impetus behind it. And as I think you'll hear from others, we've worked with the town administration and other committees to figure out where to store the boats. You know, each of these shells is expensive to buy. But at the same time, I think we have to be very honest and say that most of our shells, particularly the ones that we're going to be using there, are not the newest shells. And the actual street value of these shells is a lot less than, than, you know, we would like to think at this point. We'll have a chain-linked fence, as permitted by Bear Cove Park Committee and your zoning approval. That will have video cameras, motion sensors, and the likes. So, from that perspective, I think the equipment, for the 10 weeks it's there, I'm pretty sure it'll be okay. Because remember, we've been parking our boats in Bear Cove for almost 10 years, completely unsupervised, no cameras, you know, out in the open. So, from that perspective, that's probably the least of my concerns. The biggest concern was frankly getting permission to be able to try it. So, that's why we're here.
Thank you very much.
Marco, if you don't, if you don't mind, I had just a couple of questions.
Sure, go ahead.
How many boats do you think you'll keep over there?
Probably about eight.
Okay.
Is that right, Logan? No more than eight, because we're expecting about 80 rowers to be registered for the spring.
Okay. And are you, is there any concern with respect to wear and tear on the equipment from the wet launch?
No. In fact, you know, frankly, it might be slightly better, because at Hingham Barnes Wharf, we have almost no access to fresh water. And the salt corrosion on the boats is atrocious. And so, this is slightly more brackish water, so it might be slightly better, it won't be worse.
Okay. And I, you answered my question, because I was concerned about the, the storage sort of facility or location, but, you know, it sounds like you're doing the best you can to provide accountability for the storage of that equipment.
I think it will be okay. I'm not too concerned about that.
Okay, thank you.
Paul, did you have any questions for Marco?
I just want to make sure I understand this. You're adopting the provisions of the Harbor Access Safety Policy within this proposed agreement?
We have a, I forget how many pages it is, 50 pages? Safety plan in place that has been reviewed by the Harbor Master?
There's, there's a couple of different safety policies that apply, Paul. In December of 2016, at the same time, it's not directly related to Barnes Wharf, but at the same time, the Barnes Wharf lease was being done, the Harbor Master proposed a, what's called the Harbor Access Safety Policy, and it was adopted by the Board of Selectmen as an official policy. Ken can speak to that. In addition, the school department, high school, the individual sports programs, in this particular case, the rowing program, have their own safety, you know, operational requirements, safety policies that they apply or implement in connection with their program. So, there's a few different layers of safety. There's the overarching town policy, which Ken enforces, and then they have their own supplemental policies. So, this agreement would incorporate all of those policies.
And all the coaches are instructed and familiar with the terms of the policies?
Yes. They have to. We've reviewed it every season with them. And, you know, frankly, to be very candid about it, the number one mantra that we have is safety.
Sure.
And we tell that to the kids all the time, and none of us really want to be involved in any kind of safety accident. So, we're very cognitive of the fact that we are on water. You know, our coaches are extremely experienced on water. You know, I, it's, I've got two of my own kids in the program.
And, as I understand it, you'll be escorted in by somebody from the park to bring in the shells, place them in the storage spot?
Well, we need help from, from Bear Cove Park Committee and the park ranger, because A, there's a lock gate.
Right.
So, when we bring in the shells, we have to bring in our truck, or our rental truck, since we don't have a truck, with the trailer. And then we, you know, have to have the fence put up, so that will all be coordinated with Bear Cove Park Committee and the ranger.
Is that pretty much a one-time deal?
Hopefully, the only flying the ointment is that if the Army Corps of Engineer gets to their testing, then we've been notified, we have to either find out how long they're going to be testing. If it's more than a week, we will get our equipment out.
Okay.
Or if it's near the area of where they're going to be exploding things, if that happens.
This is just the limitations.
But in the ordinary course...
You poked the wrong thing.
No.
The kids would walk in from the Bear Cove Park Drive parking area?
There's two access points. Bear Cove Park Drive is, is where we have been asked to park, which is next to the South Shore Railroad Museum. There is probably somewhere between 15 to 20 kids at most that would actually drive and park. The other kids mostly carpool by moms and dads. And my personal preferred access point for that would be Lynch Field, because it's a lot closer in terms of distance, and I think it's slightly safer, to be honest, than having to walk the, you know, almost a mile through the woods from, from the railroad building.
Museum, yep.
Now, we do have a policy in place, they have to have at least two minimum buddies, preferably three, on any kind of, you know, commute between the parking drop-off and the launch area.
And Marco, the hours, the hours of operation, I think, for the pilot are 6:30 to 9:00, 2:30 to 7:00 PM, and then Saturday's 9:00 to 12:00.
Right.
So, as the season gets longer...
There's no issue with daylight?
It wouldn't be a daylight issue?
That was our big concern?
Yep.
No, because even now, it's still daylight.
Yep. Paul, one of the considerations with Lynch Field is that in the springtime, that's when you're going to have that field active with Little League and things.
Right.
So, we didn't want cars, you know, parking along Beale Street and...
Makes sense.
Yeah. Ken, did you want to comment a little bit on the, the safety policy? You know, Paul, Paul's brought it up, and I know you've been working with, with all these groups to, to, to see how this applies to this program.
Yeah, and in particular, maybe make some comments on the addendum that you've drafted in connection with this.
So, yeah, so, okay, so the Harbor Safety Access Safety Policy, there's been some discussion that, or maybe belief that this really only applies to activities like in the inner harbor, but this actually applies to these activities wherever they are in the harbor, whether it be the inner harbor, the Wirral River, or the Back River. So, I feel confident that what we have in place will cover us for the activities in the, the Back River. We may find, as we go through the pilot program, that, you know, in the next year, we need to make some modifications or changes to this, and we can do so. I think there's probably, there's one area for sure that this is definitely lacking, and that is in respects to refuge areas. If the boats are out in the river and need to go in because, you know, all of a sudden there's lightning, or there's some sort of emergency, we want to have pre-designated areas that they will go into that are determined ahead of time, so that when they, if they have an option, option between A or B, they're going to pick the best location for support vehicles, whether it be trucks, or fire, EMS, whatever's necessary. So, if they go in and there's a problem, we can actually get to them. For instance, there's a small island in the Back River, we don't want them to pick that as one of their points to, to go in. So, this is the, the safety policy. The, the addendum that we're talking about, that wasn't drafted by the town.
Okay.
That's one of their operational documents that they are using. And as the program takes off and goes forward, that's something that they will, they will modify as necessary to develop operations for their program as they operate from the Back River.
Is it your intention to monitor this program as the Harbor Master, and perhaps in response to what you observe, craft additional criteria? Should this program become a permanent one?
Yes.
Okay.
So, we've monitored sailing and rowing all the time while they've been in the, the inner harbor. We'll continue to do that while they are in the Back River. With that said, you know, we're not going to necessarily be down there every time they're practicing. I think the first week or so, there'll be more of a presence to make sure that they're safely getting into the water, they're not having any issues with the currents, and we determine where these points of refuge would be, so if they need to go in, they can do so. You know, so we'll be keeping a closer eye on it at the beginning, we'll be staffed and able to respond. We won't be necessarily there on a day-to-day basis, monitoring and overseeing the program. That's really the responsibility of the coaches and, you know, the school department, to make sure that the kids are safe on a day-to-day basis and, and monitor their activities. Obviously, if we're needed, we'll be there to assist and help out. That's our job, and we will gladly do that.
And is your boat in? Are you in?
The boat's not in yet. We'll be putting it in very shortly, just trying to avoid some of the snows.
Yep.
Because it takes more maintenance in the water with the snow, but...
Jeez.
But the boats, we have two boats, three boats, they're all ready to go in. That's not going to be much of a problem for us, it's just going to be a little bit of time to put the boat in, but we'll have the boat in.
Okay.
And ready to respond.
Question. Could I just have an understanding of where you guys are going to be rowing back and forth? Are you going to be going, staying within the Back River Bridge and rowing up to, I don't know?
We, Logan, you better comment on that.
Logan, could I ask you to come up to the microphone, please?
So, Logan Greenlee is our program director, and he is in charge of the coaches, so...
Okay.
Welcome, Logan.
He's raced from Boston to Bermuda and come in second. Third, sorry. This year, he's second.
So, our plan initially is to stay within the confines of the bridge and the beach for, for kind of maybe the first week. As the Coxins become accustomed to the river, and we have a chance to assess the water conditions at different tide stages, we may go through the bridge and come back. I was also a Coxin for Northeastern, and spent many nights on the Charles, rowing through bridges. It's not too hard to get through, so long as the current's not...
How far up the river are you going, though? Inland?
So, it depends. Depends on the tide. At high tide, we get another probably 2,000 meters, maybe. So, that would be worthy of, of exploring. But, you know, instructing the coaches with the tide tables, you know, saying, "Hey, you know, you guys can go up this far tonight," or whatever, that will be part of my job to make sure that they're informed about the water conditions.
Are you going to have these, these boats side by side, or one in front of the other?
So, as we have it staffed now, no coach will be responsible for more than two boats. So, those two boats, depending on what they're doing, might be side-by-side racing, but we probably wouldn't be three abreast unless there was some practice reason for it. And hopefully, one coach, one boat, you know, for many of the cases.
So, the, the coaches in a motorized boat?
Yes.
An outboard?
Yep. We have Carolina Skiffs, several whalers as well. They're also not in the water yet, either, so...
And they all have safety bags.
Are the, are the outboards launched in this area that you're contemplating, or is that done somewhere else?
So, the coaches will initially meet at the Hingham Shipyard Marina. The land coach will be responsible for coordinating the launch of the boats. The boats will not take to the river until the coaches meet them at the beach.
And this is the first year you're having a land coach, is my understanding?
Yes.
I would just, I would just add that as, as the mother of a former Coxin with the rowing program, a lot of the regattas involve going under bridges and things like that, and being able to practice that, because when you're in a live regatta and you've got a lot of commotion, you're in a strange place and have to go under a bridge, that, that in and of itself is a safety risk. So, Tom?
So, a couple of things, and Ken needs to speak to this, but...
Sure.
Communication between the, the coaches in the water and Ken's, Ken's Harbor Masters, as well as, I think, there's a question about the bridge.
Yeah, so there seems to be some concern about, you know, rowing under the bridge. I'm going to guess it has to do with the current and dangers that might be associated with that. I think it's important to, to note that rowing traditionally takes place in a river, and there are bridges. So, you know, at, at a certain point, there might be the opportunity where they can start passing under the bridge, but I don't think we're going to jump to that too soon. We're going to first get comfortable with the Back River, get comfortable with the currents, and see how that progresses, and then we'll make an educated decision on, you know, whether it's safe to, to go under the bridge and how far they'll go. We don't want to be getting out into the areas of the commuter boat or anything like that, so, you know, we'll, we'll allow it to continue in a, in a safe and appropriate fashion, as we see that the, the rowers are fit to do that. So, I don't want to say that we're not going to go under the bridge, but we'll take that on a case-by-case basis, weather, weather-dependent, ability of the rowers, and so forth. Because, like you say, we do want them to be comfortable with going under the bridge, because they do do that in actual rowing.
Do you make that call?
I think it's going to probably be more of a combined effort between the coaches, myself, and potentially the school department. They may have some, some say in this, too. They may, may, may or may not want them doing that, but ultimately, I think, if I see something that I'm concerned about, and we need to just say, "Okay, not right now," then, then that will be stopped.
Ken's actually asked me to make a note on the agreement, that it state that they're not going to go under the bridge unless he's approved it. So, that's something that might get added, say, in section B1, where it talks about they have the right to use the river. There's going to be something specific, right, Ken? As Ken just mentioned, that state they will not go under the bridge if Ken hasn't approved it.
Okay. And I mean, it just, it sounds like what we're, what we're contemplating here is kind of regular communication, like we, we all need to be on the same page, sort of almost daily. And I know the, the addendum that you drafted seems to contemplate that. You know, we're, we're all looking for this program to be successful, and as you said, Marco, we're all looking for this program to be as safe as we can possibly make it. So, I do feel like the more we're communicating with each other about water conditions and, and folks on the water, you know, the better really for all of us. You know, I, I'm excited about this opportunity for you and for you, and the, and for the students who are rowing. I, I think, to your point, you know, there's nothing more frustrating than being part of a team where you, you know, you're, you're urging when everybody else is on the water. So, you know, I, I, I think this is certainly worth a try, and, you know, I appreciate everybody's work in trying to anticipate, you know, the number of details and also the number of questions that folks like us have at the Board of Selectmen.
I have another question.
Please.
What about other traffic on the water? That's unrelated to what's going on here? Is there any way to kind of have a warning flag or something, or some kind of sign saying, "Hey, rowers out there?"
Yeah, that's a good point.
Use caution?
Um, there's, so, so, starting out this time of year, there's not a whole lot of boat traffic to begin with. You know, we will start seeing some of the paddle boards and the kayaks pretty quick, and some of the small recreational boats. It is all slow, no wakes, so there shouldn't be any power boats buzzing up there quickly. There are potentially a couple of things that we could try to do to bring some awareness to this, but I would have to check with the Coast Guard before I speak on those, but we could potentially do a couple of things.
I think it's a good idea, Paul.
To bring some attention to it.
We'll also make sure that all of the coaches' launches have air horns.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Are you in contact with the Harbor Master through some kind of radio net?
We all, the coaches will all carry VHF radios for marine use and cell phones.
Okay.
So, they'll be able to reach us on the VHF radio, or else they'll call on a cellphone?
And technically, any vessels that are out there are required to have, to be monitoring, you know...
16.
Monitoring Channel 16 and, you know, be able, so... Ken, did you have anything else to add about the safety elements?
I don't, I think I've covered everything. I mean, there, there, I guess I just want to say that, you know, any type of activity on the water, whether it be rowing or sailing, there are inherent dangers in, in it, being on the water. I think, overall, I think the Back River is probably a little bit safer, because there's less wind, potentially less waves, so it's a somewhat of a safer environment. Obviously, we do have some additional things like current and so forth, but I think overall, it's safer. There's, they'll always be relatively close to a point on land, whereas in the inner harbor, they can be kind of out in the middle and be quite a ways from land. So, I think that there are definitely dangers associated with anything in the water, and anything can happen, but I think, overall, this is a pretty safe location for them to be operating.
Well, do, can we talk about the, want to talk about the agreement a little bit?
Sure. Logan, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Todd or John, but before we get into sort of the mechanics of an MOU, was there anything from the school administration that, that either of you wanted to add?
Well, the chief.
Well, I would just say that we're very enthusiastic, and as is our new athletic director, about this opportunity. And we certainly see it as a pilot, but are very hopeful. And I, like Ken mentioned, being near points of land gives someone like me, who isn't on the water a lot, a lot more comfort. But it was an earlier comment about, about safety, and there is a document that you finally have, as of tonight, but, that you don't need to, to look at. But we have an agreement between the school department and the rowing association. And one of the sections of that agreement is about, it talks about all kinds of, all aspects of the program, the section on government and management. And it says that the parties, and the parties would be Rowing Association, as represented by Marco on the, on the board, and also the school department, as represented by John, having the most to do with things like insurance and the boats, and the maintenance and the storage and all of those things, and, and, and in terms of the actual rowing by the athletic director. There's a statement that says, "We're in agreement that the following documents will guide." And it's a long list, so we're not going to read it all, but there's a lot of information there about, and your, your document, the Selectmen's document is included there, as are documents that have been generated by the Rowing Association, like the Crew Operations Management, the HHSRA Safety Manual and Coach's Guide, the Harbor Access Safety Document that the Selectmen generated several years ago, and the Public Schools Policy Handbook, and the Coach's Handbook for the Public Schools. And all of the coaches are members of our broader coaching staff for, for this spring's rowing program. They attend the annual coaches orientation that happens before the season begins, subject to all of the rules of the coaches that we have on land. And sailing, of course, is another program that we operate. So, this is a very document-guided effort, as it should be, mainly for safety, for safety reasons, but also for consistency. So, I dropped off these tonight for, copy for Tom, and copy for Susan, copy for the Selectmen.
Thank you.
So, it's a long-awaited document, getting it all signed. So, so there are a lot of references to things that are in place. We have a great relationship with the, with the board, and a lot of new staff that might don't all know yet, but we are very hopeful that this will move forward. We appreciate what you've done and what Susan has done, under your request, to, to make this a reality. Thank you.
Yeah. And thank, you know, I know you and the school committee worked to get that document. There was a lot of work involved in getting that, in getting that completed. And I, I think the school committee signed off and voted on it, it was about like maybe six weeks ago?
Yes.
And, you know, I think it's, at, at the time, I, you know, we, we weren't aware where this program was, but it was very helpful to have that in place.
And I would say the document is between the school department, no, the school department and the Rowing Association.
Yep.
And so, it's signed by me and by Marco.
Yep, okay.
But certainly, the school committee has reviewed it, and Amy was an active member of the group that drafted it.
Okay. So, I think as, as far as a lot of this goes with respect to safety and operations, Okay. So, I think as far as a lot of this goes with respect to safety and operations, I think my observation, having participated in, you know, some of the lease documents and things, are that in the last 15 months, a great deal of effort has gone into defining and codifying expectations, and I think that's going to serve this pilot program very well. Chief Olson, I didn't know if you had anything else to add. I know you had requested the parking. I didn't know if there was anything else.
No, my only concern was just, in the event that you do have, like, parents coming and watching. I don't know how these things work, so they'd have to be respectful, and I think, I don't want to overflow the parking on Beale Street. And if you have any dogs in the boats, make sure you follow the leash.
(laughing)
That's important.
And they need flotation devices.
We'll coordinate with you, I guess, regarding the alarm systems and all that stuff.
Yes.
Or with someone, just because if they're going off, I just need to know who's responding and how that's being handled. And my preference is not to be down there checking them all the time, so that's all.
We won't be doing any regattas there, so my suspicion is most parents of teenage kids don't want to watch their kids practice. Prefer to drop off, so I don't expect to see many of them.
All right, thank you.
I know that the communication, this is a group that communicates very frequently. You know, I might just also suggest that, you know, if we sign off on this, that, you know, two weeks in, I would maybe just have kind of a formal, let's just kind of sit down and just, any questions, anybody has any concerns, just so that if there are any unintended consequences or any unforeseen situations, you know, it's a 10-week program. We want it to be successful. If there are any hiccups, let's nip them in the bud so that they don't, you know, become a bigger issue.
And is that something you would anticipate the group does together, or does the group come back here? How does, how would that work?
What do you think?
Well, I mean, I don't want to, I don't want to impose kind of our formality over this, but I do share, because I'd sort of written that down, too, like, hey, let's check in on this, so.
Just use me. I mean, I can coordinate that. So, I can call a meeting with myself, Marco, the team.
Yeah, let's do that.
Dotter, John, and Susan.
And just like, two weeks in, if anybody has any concerns, let's just, you know, deal with them quickly. Okay, so, we have, Susan has spent a lot of time putting together a memorandum of understanding that would define this, and I would say that, again, and, you know, the snow days made our life a little more challenging as well. So, we've gotten some feedback to Susan. Some other feedback came into her today. So, I think what we might want to do is try to walk through some of this and see if there are any changes and things that we would like to modify. My sense is that it's not necessarily anything substantial in terms of the operation. We're not looking at changing the hours. It's just kind of clarifying language, defining some things. You know, Marco, I'm in between two lawyers who, you know, they're looking at this through their eyes.
Lucky you.
Which is really helpful. And, you know, again, just as all these other documents have laid out expectations, we, this document is our turn to do that. So, Karen, I don't know how you wanna.
Yeah, so, you know, I.
Walk through some of this.
So, this is my, this was my first opportunity to go through anything like this, any sort of MOU, any kind of interdepartmental agreement. So, you know, it's, I'm not a municipal lawyer, and I shouldn't play one on TV, is the takeaway I got at the end of this. But I had some sort of basic structural questions that I'm happy to work out with Susan. The, I guess, the one, the one comment I made that may in fact be a substantive comment was, you know, I'm more familiar in kind of the private party context when you would enter into an agreement like this. First of all, you'd call it a license. It'd be a license to use real estate, and the grantor of the license typically would reserve the right to revoke the license. There is, if you've seen the draft agreement, there is a process in here that if there's a complaint about the use of the launch site, or the Back River, or the storage, for that matter, you know, somebody could complain. Tom would get involved to sort of mediate that complaint. If people didn't like where that ended up, it would ultimately come back before us. So, you know, there is some notion that if, you know, we're hoping that the sort of ongoing communication takes that completely out of play. But in that, in that event, I guess the thing for me that's missing, though, is just this, if something weird happens, like, I don't know, the National Park Service all of a sudden decides that whatever they've, permission they've given us, they've, you know, they're reneging on, or the Army Corps of Engineers is in fact gonna be there all spring, or whatever. I just, to me, typically, the grantor would maintain this right to revoke, you know, I don't know, it's not really for cause, I guess. So, that was a missing piece for me. And then, again, I had some more, kind of more technical questions that I can work out with Susan. I did have a question, though, about the insurance policy that is an addendum, I think, to this agreement.
Yes.
So, the insured there is listed as Hingham High School Rowing. So, just where, just so you understand where I'm going on this, you know, one of my jobs, when stuff like this comes across our desk, I feel like is, like, hey, does this open the town up to any additional liability? And so, you know, I think what Susan was trying to tell me this morning is, the town is the town. So, the fact that we're endorsing sort of a relocation of your operation to a different section of the town doesn't change, I guess, the town's exposure to the operation of this program. And the fact that it's operated under the auspices of the school department is, we're sort of indifferent to. It is a town liability. Because where I was headed with this is, again, in the typical private context, a license to use real estate would include an indemnity and hold harmless clause, which isn't part of our agreement, because we're not indemnifying and holding ourselves harmless. So, right. But my one question to all of that is, the insurance policy that's appended here, the name of the insured is Hingham High School Rowing. So, I wanted, Hingham High School Rowing Association. So, HHSRA, as an independent charitable entity, is the insured for this program, or how does?
We carry multiple insurance policies, probably two then, to be honest.
Marco, could you just go up to the microphone? I just want to make sure that people watching have the ability to hear you. Thank you.
So, the question's about insurance. So, we have multiple insurance policies. The town has a insurance policy that covers liability and damage in some instances. We have a master policy with a group called U.S. Rowing, which has all kinds of umbrellas attached to it that covers anything from damage to our boats. So, if a parent drives a trailer and backs into another trailer, that's covered by our U.S. Rowing Insurance.
Okay.
When we rent a truck to move the trailers to a regatta, that is covered by our U.S. Rowing Insurance Policy.
Okay.
So, the liability, I suppose, falls between the two, between the town and between our policy.
Okay.
You know, we're pretty careful about not making claims.
And we've said, I guess we've said in the agreement, that, for instance, if, notwithstanding the steps that you've taken to, you know, secure the storage area, for instance, if someone came in and vandalized those boats, that wouldn't be, or I'm assuming that that wouldn't be the responsibility of the town. Certainly, under the agreement, we've said, you know, you're keeping your stuff here, that's, you know, that unfortunately is on you, kind of thing.
The MOU we have with the school committee would put that squarely back in our organization in terms of maintenance.
It's in our agreement as well.
Right. It's, yeah.
We pay for it.
Multi-layered, right.
Parents pay for it.
Okay. Yeah, yeah. It always comes back to that, doesn't it?
Yeah.
Dotter, did you have something to add?
As the equipment has been acquired by the rowing association and periodically have turned that equipment over to the town, so that we have some responsibility for coverage for some of their.
Some pieces of property.
That now is town-owned.
Okay.
As well as liability.
Okay.
I think we've donated maybe 20 of the shells to the town at this point.
Okay. The other, I guess the other change I suggested to the agreement, and I want to understand if this is gonna have any programmatic consequences, is I've indicated that I didn't want any launch activities to take place until the Carolina skiffs, or whatever the chase boats are, are actually in the Back River. So, I don't want anybody in the water till the boats are there.
I think that's a reasonable request. We wouldn't do it anyway, because it's not safe.
Okay.
Is that reflected anywhere in the documents?
I don't know if we spelled it out.
It is.
I thought I read that, actually.
That's strictly in our safety policy there.
I thought.
That there won't be any launches until everybody's there.
It's also covered in the harbor access safety.
Okay. So, again, a multi-layered approach to this. Okay. I think, I think the rest of the stuff, I feel pretty confident that I could just run through with you. So, thank you.
And so, I noticed that there were a couple of changes. So, no hazardous materials stored in the storage area.
No, because the launches will be at Hewitt's Cove, so that's where we'll fill up with gas.
There won't be any gasoline. And we've specified here, and again, this is just because of the National Park Service. And again, we, with this being student rowing and a pilot, the National Park Service is good. If we had, if there was any activity outside of that, and somebody complains to the National Park Service, and that's happened in the town before on other things, they could sort of pull this. So, we specified in here as well that the only people who can participate in this are students who are registered athletes of the Hingham High School rowing team and the coaches.
Yes.
So, that's the scope of this pilot. Again, if we have a good experience, we think about other things, but if you're not, you know, if you haven't done your spring registration for rowing through the athletic department.
Well, they couldn't row anywhere.
Right, then they couldn't row. So, you know, I've asked that that.
It has to be cross-reference against the school department.
Right. I've asked that that be specified in here, because, as Karen said, we have an obligation to protect the town, and this is protection for our agreement with the National Park Service.
That's fine.
Is there a listing of the coaches? I thought I saw something in here.
Yeah, we have seven coaches.
It was in the addendum.
We've never been as well-staffed as this year.
Yes, now we saw the staff.
Well, that's a good safety benefit.
Yeah. So, are you comfortable with?
Well, so, I guess what I'd like, I mean, I guess what I might suggest, if you and Paul are comfortable with it, is, you know, I think the agreement is, you know, probably 90, 95% there, from my perspective. But in part, just because I took some time to actually read it and make some suggestions, I'd like to run through those with Susan.
Yep.
I feel like the edits I made, in my heart, other than the, other than this sort of general right to revoke in some extraordinary circumstance, really are non-substantive changes and meant to clarify. So, if you are comfortable with that, I would think we could approve this, subject to whatever changes we work out with Susan. If we get to a point where Susan feels like, no, these are actually substantive changes, we may have to revote it. But I guess.
In which case, we would have to revote it Tuesday night, which is our next scheduled meeting.
Right. But, I mean, you know, you tell me. I think we could work through these changes. We could approve it, and Susan and I could work through the changes.
So, I don't disagree. I think that, you know, part of the rowing programs' concerns aren't necessarily getting in the water by the 19th, but it's getting some of the, getting some of the staging in place.
Yep.
They have some costs. They have some effort that has to be undertaken. Technically, they shouldn't do that without some sort of a task approval from this board.
Right.
So, if we could give them that tonight, that would be helpful, and then, you know, dot our i's and cross our t's as we go.
So, Susan?
I just, if it's okay, since we have everyone here, I, most of the information, and if you've seen this, I tried to pull from the information you gave to Bear Cove Park. I tried to not make things up from whole cloth. I made some assumptions. So, for example, the porta potty, portable bathroom, you know, I made assumption, I think it's something that they're required to do, for example, at the farmer's market, that they have to have it serviced at least weekly, especially if it starts getting warm and you don't want, right? So, I guess, and it was a question Tom and I had, we assume that that's going to be within the gate?
Yes.
Okay.
Because we don't want anybody else using it and filling it up.
Right, okay. And then, so, just to Paul's question, and it is authorized in here, but it might go to Paul, question of how often vehicles are gonna be in there. So, however often that needs to be serviced, that will have to be coordinated with Scott as well, yes. Okay. So, I just want to make sure that that, because that's something where the boats might come in once and leave once, but that may have to be 10 times if you're doing it every week.
By the way, I should note that the boats will go out for the regattas. So, when we have regattas up in Worcester and Lowell, they're always on a Saturday in the spring. So, those boats will probably be pulled out on a Friday night.
Okay.
And staged somewhere else to make it easy for us to pull out. And, you know, we usually get to these regattas by 5:00, 5:30 in the morning.
Okay. So, I assume Scott McMillan has the keys that, are you, I'm looking at the chief here.
Yep, no. Logan, did you have something? Did you have some, I saw your hand.
Marco addressed the regatta.
Okay, okay.
Love it.
If we were to approve this tonight, subject to those details being worked out, there were a couple of things that I heard, and I'm just trying to think about how to craft a motion. I heard that there was a potential on Page 2, under 1A, to add restrictions with respect to the bridge, to rowing under the bridge.
That's just some proposed language with a subject to, if you wanted to list the things under there.
Right. So, I think there was one item, which was the bridge. A second item that I took a note of was the identification of an emergency refuge area as part of the harbor access safety policy. And I know, Ken, you can't do that until they get out there. So, and then I guess the third thing would be, Karen, your thought about the revocation.
Yeah, I mean, in some ways, I think it's a little bit of a formality, but, you know.
I just want to make sure that we, if we, you know, are you okay voting this tonight, letting Karen to work out the details?
I'm good to go.
I mean, I think we've, you know, a lot of us, and my appreciation to everybody in this room, particularly Tom and Susan, we've worked really hard over the last couple of weeks to get here tonight, because we know your season starts Monday, and we want to be, we want to be supportive of that. So, I just would need help with a motion that allows us to note those couple things, because it sounds, Karen, like some of the other things that you'd like are more just language as opposed to substance.
Mary, may I make one more comment?
Sure.
So, we have, on a weekly basis, a planned schedule for our practices that Logan will share with the harbor master.
That'd be great.
And at that point, we'll know at which stage we feel comfortable enough to be able to get out under that bridge when the kids are ready, et cetera. So, we'll know in advance.
But I think, I think what I'm kind of hearing is, and I think there has to be mutual agreement. Like, I think you're, you know, absolutely, you guys got to be comfortable that the student athletes are ready. Ken does as well.
Right.
I mean, Ken, I think the intention here is Ken has a veto power.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I didn't know if you also wanted to make it subject to a, or add to the list, a two-week meeting, a meeting in a couple of weeks, just to make sure that this.
Just to check in, yep. And what I might also just suggest, that what we do here is, and Karen's writing up this vote, so, really glad that there's lawyers on this board. I really do appreciate it. I might also just suggest that we have a meeting on Tuesday. Let's just put this on the posted agenda, when we post the agenda Friday, just in case. That way, if on Monday, we find there's some reason we have to come back here, it's ready to go. So, you'll see it on our agenda. It's an insurance policy on the agenda.
Because I think, once I talked through Karen's comments, there was a lot of comments flying back, so I wasn't able to get to everything today. If there's something that I feel changes in some way, even though it wasn't originally contemplated to change something substantively, give the board and the school department a chance to chat about it.
Absolutely. And when that gets there, let's make sure that, you know, Marco, the school department, get it. And again, if there's something in there that feels more significant to you, you know, raise the flag. We'll take it up on Tuesday.
Yeah, because I'm not, we're not meaning, that's not the, that's not the goal of this.
That would not be, right.
Right.
And then, Mary, just while Karen's working on that, do you mind if I just, since we have everybody, just kind of, this is a pilot program. It's ending, I think, the time in here that I took out of that your documents was June 8. In the event, everyone thinks this worked great and a good idea, just so everybody's here at the same time, all we do have the okay for is the pilot program.
June 8.
I would say that kind of talking with and working with the Bear Cove Park Committee is a great idea. In fact, when Tom and I were on the phone with the National Park Service, they said, how does the Bear Cove Park Committee feel about it? So, you know, having all of the kind of interested parties in the town. the kind of interested parties in the town involved is important. Lonnie Fournier from the Conservation Commission has told me she's fine with it for this year, as long as you're only launching in that same area that's been designated where dogs can come in and out. It can only, I had seen a plan that had lots of arrows all over the place.
We had originally been told by zoning that we had to go in that direction.
Yeah, no, so that's good, but that one.
Not to be the right place.
Yeah. That one location where the dogs are permitted to go into the water is where the boats are allowed to go in the water. So that type of thing. But Lonnie had said, if it's going to become a kind of permanent annual, it will need to go in front of the Conservation Commission, because that annually doing this is going to create a lot more potential impact than doing it for one 10-week period. I, I think you're fine, as long as we're still talking about the high school school program, we're good under zoning, because it's a Dover Amendment, educational use, the sports are. So I think you're going to be good as to zoning. But we will need to, the Board of Selectmen will need to make a formal request to the National Park Service to amend a document that's called the Program of Utilization for the Park. And so that, that we would have to do if it's going to become something that's intended to be permanent. So that's what I'm saying. If you can keep Tom in the loop, once the program's over, and not kind of get, if you lose the summer and then all of a sudden it's October, and it's much better. If you know in June, this was great, everybody wants to do it, I would suggest July is when we start this conversation. So I just, I thank you for giving me that. I just want to walk everyone through the process going forward.
I think that's a good idea, and, you know, fresh in our minds. And also, I think as we've learned, sometimes what, what feels like it should be easy and straightforward is not as easy and straightforward as we think. And so we want to, you know, have the benefit of the summer, because your fall season will be here.
We'll know by the end of April.
Yeah.
One way or another.
Okay.
And at that point, we will take the next steps to ensure that, you know, if it's a great location, we have the ability to continue it there.
Okay. Are you, so, are the, okay, so the, the five things I would include in this motion as conditions would be consents required to row past the Back River Bridge Boundary, identification of refuge areas, inclusion of a general revocation provision, a status meeting, and then clarifying administrative changes included at the request of the Board of Selectmen. So that's what I would do. And frankly, Marco, if I see this, if I see anything developing on this, first of all, I will be in touch with Tom. But second of all, I'll, you know, we'll reach out to you. You know, again, this is not, this is, all this is meaning to do is try to finalize this in a timely fashion and get you where you need to be, you know, and to make sure that we have, as Mary said, you know, we've gone through a lot of iterations, and we just want to get this where it needs to be, I think.
No, we're very grateful for that, because the kids and their parents are.
Yeah, yeah, let's go.
Blooming over our shoulder.
Do you want to make the motion?
So I move that we enter into a memorandum of understanding with the Hingham Public Schools to allow for a pilot rowing program within Bearcove Park, subject to the inclusion of provisions relating to the following. Number one, consents required to allow participants to row past the Boundary of the Back River Bridge. Number two, identification of refuge areas pursuant to the harbor safety access policy. Number three, the inclusion of a general revocation provision. Number four, a status meeting of the HHS, comprised of HHSRA representatives, the town administrator and the harbor master, honor about two weeks from the start date of the pilot program. And number five, clarifying and administrative changes included at the request of the Board of Selectmen.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you again to everybody for, I think there was great cooperation in getting this to where it was. I don't want to be the bearer of bad news, but I did hear that there's another storm scheduled for like early next week, so, you know.
Listen, the town can't afford another storm.
No, that's right. That's right.
Yeah, you're telling us.
And just before, before Dot and John head out, we have just a quick vote, which is to, it is standard issue that, that we waive building permit fees.
Thanks for being here. Thank you very much.
For any, any sort of, you know, work performed on any of our buildings. So I'm going to make a motion to approve the request of the school department to waive the permit fee for the installation of safety netting at the high school gym.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And then we have actually a weather-related reserve fund transfer. Tom, could you just?
Sure. So the March 2nd storm undercut and washed out about another three feet or so of the parking lot down by the town pier. And that, as a result, we would like to rebuild that. The DEP has given us a window of time to do so as an emergency repair without their sometimes onerous oversight and permitting process. So we're asking that we follow that, follow their guidance, and get this repaired done in this, in this window. We would need the repair to be complete, I believe, by April 1st, either April 1st or April 3rd. And that would require a reserve fund transfer as soon as possible, so that we can get the crews out there. What the intent is, just so you know, the broken portion of the parking lot that's fallen in, we'll kick that back about five-plus feet, saw cut, level off and repave, right up to the parking signs the way it was.
Any questions for Tom?
So the balance in the account is 240-ish. So this would take it down to $200,000?
No, that's the account being transferred to.
Oh, that's the company.
But all those, that $240,000 is already spoken for, for other things.
Got it. Okay, yep, no questions.
Make a motion to approve the reserve fund transfer in the amount of $40,111 to the town engineering road building account.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Terrific. Our next meeting is scheduled for next Tuesday, March 20. Just before we sign off, this board would like to give a shout out and appreciation to, in particular, the members of the Department of Public Works, who have been just working so hard and in conjunction with Hingham Light. We appreciate all the efforts from Hingham Light, from our police department, our fire department, for helping us get through another storm.
Absolutely. Here, here.
So with that, take a motion to adjourn?
Sure.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.